Hey, hello everyone and welcome to ESMARConf 2022 and the special session number eight, developing the synthesis community. As always, this session is being livestreamed to YouTube and the individual presentations have been pre-recorded and published on YouTube as well. Subtitles have been verified and can be auto-translated. For those individual talks, automatic subtitles will be available shortly for this livestream. If you have questions for our presenters, you can ask them via the presenter's individual tweet from the @eshhackathon Twitter account, which is also on the slide here. Presenters may have time after their talks to answer some of the questions or at the end of the session if time allows. We will endeavor to answer all questions soon after the event. We would also like to remind you of our code of conduct, which is available on our website at github.io. So now I would like to introduce you to our first presenter, Wolfgang Fichtbauer from Maastricht University. Wolfgang, you're on.
All right, just a second. All right, here we go. So my name is Wolfgang Fichtbauer from Maastricht University in the Netherlands and I will be presenting on the meta-dot package, a collection of meta-analysis data sets for R. So one of the nice things about published meta-analyses is that they often, not always, but often, include the full dataset that was used for the analysis. So for example, down here, you see table one from the meta-analysis by Colletts and Carlecks on the effectiveness of the BCG vaccine against tuberculosis. So for each of the included studies, we have the number of participants that were vaccinated, those that were in the control group, and the number of TB cases in each of these groups, based on which you can compute an effect size measure and then conduct a meta-analysis. So by going to meta-analyses, we can actually build up a whole collection of meta-analytic datasets. So you do not have to go back to the primary studies and extract the information from those, which would be really tedious and time-consuming. Somebody has already done this and if you're lucky, you can find the dataset in a table or maybe in an appendix and then we can put it into our database. And why is this useful while for various purposes? For teaching purposes, for illustrating or testing methods, for validating the analyses that were conducted, and for sensitivity checks. So what you see here is the BCG dataset as it was included in the meta-for package. So again, we have the studies and we have the same information that was in this table one, except that instead of the number of cases and the group sizes, we have the number of cases and non-cases in the treated or the vaccinated group and the same for the control group, but this is essentially the same information. So then we can compute the same effect size measure that was used in the meta-analysis by Colletts and Carlecks, these risk ratios or more specifically log risk ratios. So now we have those in our dataset and the corresponding variances. Then we can pass this information to a modeling function, like the RMA function from the metaphor package and conduct a random effects model meta-analysis. Here I use the DL, the Dersimone and Lerd estimator, because that is also what was used by Colletts and Carlecks. So we get these results, not gonna discuss these, that's not the focus here. We can backtransform the estimated average log risk ratio into an average risk ratio. And here we have this estimate, so on average vaccinated individuals have about half of the risk as those in the control groups with a corresponding confidence interval. And then we can compare these results to what was given in the meta-analysis and we see that this matches up exactly. So we are able to reproduce the findings or the results from the Colletts at our meta-analysis. In addition to this, we can conduct some sensitivity analysis. So again, here are the results that we just looked at, but we could maybe use the mental Hansel method, which is a fixed effects model, or use one of these binomial normal models or various Bayesian models. For example, here are the results from the base meta-package that we heard about yesterday. So we can compare these results, see how different or similar they are and essentially do a sensitivity analysis. So over the years, I've included more and more datasets like this in the metaphor package. Each of these dots is a release of the metaphor package. So over time, you can see that the number of datasets keeps going up and eventually I got to around sixty datasets. At a certain point though, the idea arose of moving these datasets into a separate data package. Why? Well, it would make it easier to add datasets even without updating the metaphor package itself and the code in the metaphor package might not change, but you might want to add some datasets. And also then it would be maybe a bit easier for others to contribute datasets. It might seem a bit more daunting to make a contribution to metaphor. Instead, if there's a data package, then this is maybe a bit easier to make a contribution. So we started working on this, on this at the 2019 Evidence Synthesis Hackathon. So together with Thomas, Emily, Daniel, Alistair and Kyle. And then eventually we released the first version on CRAN two years later. So there was a bit of a delay for various reasons, but eventually we got it out there. So here's the link to the CRAN page. The development is running over GitHub, as everybody does. You can read the documentation nicely formatted online using the package-down package and the meta-dot package now includes seventy-nine datasets. The datasets all have a consistent naming scheme, so they're called dot period, then author. So the first author of the meta-analysis from which the dataset was extracted and the publication year. And these datasets are all documented in a consistent manner. So you have a general description of the dataset, description of each variable included in the dataset, details about the dataset or the meta-analysis, the source of the data. So that's typically a publication from which the data were extracted, maybe some other relevant references in case the dataset has been used in other publications. Then the person who extracted the data. So in case you do find a discrepancy between the published data and what's in meta-dot, you know who to contact. And then examples illustrating the use of the data. And this may even be a full-blown replication of all of the analyses conducted in the original meta-analysis and then some concept terms. So what are these concept terms? Each dataset is tagged with one or multiple of them and they may pertain to the field or the topic of this meta-analysis. You see some examples here. They may also describe the outcome measure used. So you have meta-analyses using correlation coefficients or as we saw earlier, risk ratios and maybe standardized mean differences. And then also the types of methods that were used in the meta-analysis or that can be illustrated with the dataset. So for example, cluster robust inference or multivariate models, network meta-analysis. There are some datasets with some outliers. So this is quite interesting to look at or maybe datasets that can be used to illustrate publication bias or evidence for that. So these concept terms are really useful to find datasets that you might find interesting, but of course they need to be used consistently across all of these datasets. And if you make changes to concept terms, well, that's a bit tedious because then you have to go back through all of the existing datasets and make sure that they are tagged accordingly. And under this link, you can find a listing of all the concept terms that have been used so far. If you just want to see the datasets included, well, you can do this here with this command or you can go to this link. So let me just click on this just to show you, right? So you have all these datasets and then, well, you can take a look at them. So again, description, the format, some details, the source, maybe another reference related to this, who extracted the dataset, these concept terms, and then examples illustrating the use of this dataset. You can also search for datasets. The package includes the dot search function, which allows you to search based on the concept terms by default or a full-text search of these help files. So for example, if you want to find datasets tagged with standardized mean differences or maybe multiple key terms, arts ratios, multi-level, or if you want to do a full-text search, well, then you just set concept equal false and then these help files will be searched based on their full text. What we also want, and this is really one of the most important aspects here, is for people to contribute their datasets to the package. So we have set up a pretty detailed workflow of how this should go. So how can you contribute your own dataset if you have done a meta-analysis and you would like to include it in the meta-dot package? And there are some guiding principles here. So first of all, we want these datasets to be named in a consistent manner. We also make a distinction between the raw data in the dataset that is actually included in the package. Meta-analytic datasets are often large, not so much in terms of the number of rows, but the number of columns. Often you extract a lot of information about the studies included in the meta-analysis. And not all of these variables might be so interesting for inclusion in the dataset that goes into meta-dot. So there's the raw dataset that might have been extracted from an appendix. And then there is a data preparation script that takes this raw dataset and turns it into maybe a slightly cleaned or condensed version of the dataset that actually goes into the meta-dot package. And in addition, we wrote a function that helps people to document their dataset. So what this function does is creates a template for the help file. Not everybody is familiar with how to write these RD files and this function will set up a template that you just need to complete then. So that's pretty straightforward. So once you have put together all these files, you have the raw data file, the data preparation script that creates the R data file and the help file, you can either just make a pull request via GitHub if you're familiar with a Git workflow or just send us the files and we'll be happy to include them in the package. So at this year's conference, we also were running a little hackathon along the way. And so what was the goal of this hackathon? Well, we wanted to create a shiny app. Everybody's creating shiny apps these days, so we also wanted to, we also want a shiny app. And what does this app do or what should it do? It should sort of replicate what that search does, but in a shiny way, right? In a slightly fancier, more interactive way. And the hackathon was also an opportunity to add some additional datasets, maybe improve the documentation, think about additional functionality. And I'd be happy to report on the outcomes of this hackathon at the next, at the closing session. So that's it. Thank you for your attention. I want to thank my collaborators on the package, all the people who have already made contributions to the meta-dot package. And if you have any questions, comments or suggestions, I'd be happy to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you Wolfgang for a really fantastic presentation and package. And we do look forward to hearing about the updates during the closing session today. We are gonna hold off on questions until after all the presenters have gone. So don't forget to send us your questions on YouTube or by Twitter. And right now, we're gonna head over to our next presenter, Mark Lejeunesse, who is coming to us from the University of South Florida. So Mark, you're on.
Hi, I'm Mark Lejeunesse and forgive me for the candid presentation here, but I'm really gonna talk about three lessons I learned about trying to get undergraduates involved in screening studies for systematic reviews or meta-analyses. I've also tried to use them to help classify things for test datasets for machine learning projects. And I'll just flat-out say that it's not a straightforward endeavor, as you could imagine. But what I wanna start with is what's my motivation for doing this in the first place? And every year or every semester, I get really, really excited when I'm standing in front of an auditorium of potentially hundreds of students, thinking about, oh, how could I leverage this situation into a scenario where I could steal all their energy to code, classify, screen many, many, many studies for systematic reviews? And so I've tried this for about eight semesters now. I'm doing one right now for my parasitology course. And so I'm gonna try to describe a little bit some of the challenges that I face when getting so many students involved in this process. And maybe most importantly, how I fall flat every semester in achieving high-quality screening decisions by these students. And oh boy, let's just jump into it. Let me talk a little bit about the population of screeners. In general, they are undergraduates. They can range from their first year at the university, straight out of high school, to seniors, they've been around for four or five years. And so you could, right there, you know that there's a variation in confidence and experience with science. And of course, anyone who's ever tried to embark in a screening project, you really need to understand the language involved in how science is reported and summarized. And so the first challenge is undergraduates tend to vary quite a bit in their expertise or I wouldn't say interest, what their confidence in making screening decisions. The range of classrooms that I've experimented with, and these are not formal experiments, these are just me getting excited each semester, trying to get students involved, is they range from about forty to two hundred students. And it doesn't matter the size or the number of students involved. Really, the challenge is making sense of what they screen and what they achieve. Now, the last thing I wanna discuss is the number of studies that I've attempted to screen or classify or code with these students. And I haven't been overly ambitious with this. It's usually about three hundred to two thousand studies. And the reason I'm not super ambitious, like when you have two hundred people ready to go, it really almost makes it impossible for me to verify the decisions they make. And so if we go super ambitious and try to screen ten thousand studies, then in terms of quality control, that makes it very inefficient for me to proceed with other phases in a research synthesis project because I have to verify and check and make sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of making good decisions to screen, to exclude, include studies for systematic review. So let's begin. Here is my first lesson I learned by using hundreds of undergraduates to try to screen studies. Dual-screening designs really do not make sense in this scenario. Now, a typical dual-screening design is you have two reviewers, screen the same collection of studies and then you use, say, a kappa statistic to assess consistency between the reviewers in how they agree or disagree with what should be included or excluded. This really breaks down when you have hundreds of students because the paired design is not adequate enough to create high-quality, repeatable decisions. And the reason for that is not all students are on the same page or at the same level of making the screening decisions. No matter how much work I put into it to prepping them, you know, getting them ready with, using some sort of PICO framework of trying to answer questions when they're screening the title and abstract. There's always a cohort of studies of students, I mean, that are just not, not making effective decisions. And because we tend to approach the screening process as part of a project, we have many phases to go through in a semester. And so I really don't have much time to train them and test them over and over and over again to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So the dual-screening stuff really doesn't work because what you end up happening is having to drop entire clusters of poorly graded kappa statistics, collections of studies that there were just complete inconsistency in screening decisions, which makes the whole process again inefficient because you gotta, we have to revise and review these things over and over again. And when I first started this, I would repeat that process three, four times, right? So what would just typically be one screening bout would snowball into a second and a third screening bout, just a double, triple-check screening decisions. And so now I kind of converged on a totally different approach where I'm not evaluating groups based on consistency. I evaluate individual studies on consistency. And so what I do is I take a random sample of the students, say about twenty students in a class, and they each independently evaluate a single study. And that becomes my measure of decision consistency is kind of like this sampling experiment where I'm having many, many, many students evaluate the same title and abstract for inclusion and exclusion. And then if the statistic, the consistency statistic is high, then it probably means that it's valid to be included or excluded. This leads me to my second lesson. And this one is by far the one I have the most trouble with at all. And I'm gonna need some time to explain this because it's not at all intuitive. There tends to be a trend of high consistency in what to include when screening studies, right? Students agree very highly on what to include. What has the most variability or variation in screening decisions is on what to exclude. And in an ideal scenario, right, the probability of inclusion and exclusion should be similar. However, here in this case, what we have is students really hesitate and are challenged with making exclusion decisions. And so forgive this cloud of data points, but this is the, this is the nature of using undergraduates for screening decisions. Each axis here represents a, two bouts of screening decisions on the same studies. So one week, we screened two hundred fifty studies. The other week, we re-screened those two hundred fifty studies. Each point here is the, is the repeatability statistic of making a decision on whether or not to include or exclude an individual study. So each point here is an individual study and about twenty students made decisions on whether or not to include or exclude that study. So based on two bouts of the same studies, you can see there's a lot of noise, right? Even though they're doing the same thing over again, the decisions are not highly repeatable. You could fit a line through this and there is a correlation between the two. But the important thing to emphasize here is that there's high agreement in what to include between two separate bouts. But there's a lot of noise associated with excluding the studies. And so, you know, even though the PICO statement is very useful in making decisions on what criteria you wanna hit on when you're reading a title and abstract, it doesn't really help you much with making a decision on what to exclude, especially if you're not fully confident in reading and understanding scientific summaries. An abstract is a very unusual type of writing, right? It's concise, it's short, it tends to be way more dense in jargon sometimes because you gotta squeeze in as much information as you can in a small amount of space. This actually makes it, I feel like, makes it more difficult for undergraduates to read and understand what's happening, especially when we're trying to do a research synthesis project. This leads me to my final challenge or lesson learned. And this is by far the dimension that I've experimented the most with. Again, informal experiments is the tools will break. I mean, when you have two hundred students and they're using their phones, they're using maybe their parents' computer, maybe they're using computers at the library to do screening decisions, that inconsistency is, makes it difficult to, on my end, to make sense of what they achieve. So throughout the years, I've experimented with many, many different things. I started off with using R-generated HTML forms that populate Google Spreadsheets. But what happens with that is not all browsers are friendly or open to form-fillable things. And because people are using their phones and different tools to navigate, to browse the HTML files, this creates a lot of hiccups when assignments are due. And usually there's like a cohort of students who are having problems submitting their screening decisions because there's like a technology issue going on there. Other approaches I've used are PDFs. So again, you generate a collection of PDFs in R, they're form-fillable, fantastic. However, once the PDFs are in the hands of students, they're using different applications to, to read these things. And then when they save their effort, it's in a totally different format. And when it ends up in my hands, that results in a bunch of implementation issues because PDFs are by far the hardest files to crack open and mine information, especially form-fillable data, because depending on the application you use to save the form, the things that populate the forms, it may be in a totally different format and R is not really set up to process variations in form-fillable decisions. So what I've converged on now, and it's really just this ridiculous acrobatics, is I use Canvas, which is the software they use to take exams, watch lectures, all that stuff. And I bamboozle it for synthesis projects. And so basically in R, what I do is I take a CSV file of abstracts and titles. I convert it to a, I always forget what the file name is, I got it written right here, a QTI format, which is the only way Canvas accepts questions. And I convert the quizzes that they take online into screening, screening decision technology. This is by far the most efficient way for me to do stuff, even though it's harder for me to implement. It's easy for them to do because they have to use Canvas for all of their lectures. And when they're done their assignment, they could forget about it and I get it in a semi-convenient, consistent way where I don't have to worry about differences in how they saved their outcomes or how they submitted their outcomes. Everything is somewhat consistent, although personally, it is a ridiculous endeavor. So there's many places to go with this. And I feel like maybe the greatest inroads could be technology-wise in putting things in the hands of students that are straightforward and simple to make screening coding decisions. That is not, that is independent from what they use to make decisions and how they submit their decisions. And I know there's a lot of meat resources out there to do this, but I feel like they tend to be targeted towards researchers, people with a lot of experience in making decisions, a lot of experience with technology. And these tools don't quite fit an undergraduate who is probably five percent committed to the course realistically, right? So they have like five courses going at once. They have, the professors forcing them to do screening decisions. I mean, what we have to do is streamline that whole process to make it as simple and straightforward as possible for them. So that's it. I like to end it at that. These are some of the lessons I learned. There's certainly more, more things that I've learned. But I'm, I'm doing a shout-out here. I have many ideas on how to do this, but it'd be fantastic if I could collaborate and figure this out, crack this nut with many other people rather than me. and, and figure this out, crack this nut with many other people rather than me just doing this on my own. I guess I, what I'm bringing forward is experience and, and expertise in not successfully implementing this strategy for screening studies. And so again, there's a lot of room to grow and I think I'll end it at that. Thank you for watching.
Thanks, Mark. That was a fantastic presentation and just really highlighted some of the challenges that I've even come across in my own experience. But I haven't actually nailed down to those, you know, three issues the way you have. And I'm so glad that you brought it to the hackathon because this is, I think, the perfect group to, to try to work towards those challenges. So hopefully when we do the Q and A, there'll be lots of time to talk about that further. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to our last presentation. I'd like to introduce David Hobbie and Alexandra Banick Brown. Both are at the Berlin Institute of Health and they'll be going next.
I'm David Hobbie from Camarades Berlin, based at the Quest Center of the Berlin Institute of Health. I'm going to discuss a web app that we have built for teaching meta-analysis in R. Camarades Berlin is a group located at the Cherry Day Health Network in Berlin for the promotion of the benefits of systematic review and meta-analysis of animal studies. Camarades stands for Collaborative Approach to Meta-Analysis and Review of Animal Data from Experimental Studies and is part of an international network of preclinical researchers. We do our own research and we also provide methodological support for researchers to perform robust, high-quality reviews. One of the ways we do this is by
Sorry, everyone, it looks like we're just having a problem with the presentation on our end. It'll just be a minute while we sort that out.
R using the metaphor and meta packages. During the pandemic, the tech hurdles, which have always been present when teaching this material, have been exacerbated by the remote learning framework. Most of the participants in our workshops come from disciplines such as biomedical and medical research or epidemiology and are generally not familiar with programming languages or statistical programming software. In previous iterations of the course, we would provide an R script and some CSV data files, lay out the technical requirements in advance with the expectation that all required software be installed and functional on session day. However, some subset of the participants would often arrive without having read the requirements or installing R or the required packages or without of date or conflicting packages. This often turned the first hour or hours of the course into a troubleshooting session where we'd have to go around and figure out what was going on with each individual person who's having issues. In light of this issue, we had the idea to build a self-contained web app based on the Learn R package, which walks the user through the steps to recreate the analyses of a published meta-analysis of animal data in the biomedical field involving a comparison of controlled intervention studies affecting infarct volume. This publication used all of the medical analytical methods which we would like to teach, namely random and fixed effect models, meta-regressions and visualizations of heterogeneity with study design characteristics, forest and bubble plots. The two R meta-analysis packages which we used, meta and metaphor, contain the necessary functions for performing these analyses. In order to present these, this analysis in a useful way, we also use two additional packages. These packages were Shiny and Learn R. Shiny is a package for the creation of interactive web apps in R, which when combined with Learn R, allows R markdown documents to be converted into interactive tutorials with live code exercises. Here, for example, is one code chunk taken from section one of our app, where the user is asked to examine a dataset that was just loaded. When you click run code, the code is executed and the output is displayed in the browser. After each major section, we also have questions, we have quizzes to check for understanding with immediate feedback. So if you get the wrong answer, you can try again until you get it right. In section five, participants are asked to create their own code based on what they have learned from the preceding sections in order to answer a set of questions. If they get stuck, the hint button will point them in the right direction. Other features that can be implemented in Learn R and Shiny are embedded videos and interactive shiny elements. We actually didn't use either of these in the current iteration of the app, but it could be possible in the future. Using a teaching app allows us to sidestep any software-associated problems that individual students may have, so we can focus on the actual material and on the principles of meta-analysis. The app runs in a browser window, which means that from the student's perspective, it is an interactive website. The course is presented as a step-by-step tutorial with interactive code exercises, which walk the student from loading the data through to performing the final analyses. At each step, there are short quizzes to check comprehension. Progress is saved as the user progresses through the app so that they can leave and come back whenever they want. All code is run on our own server and we make sure that all packages are up to date to ensure full functionality. This does however, present its own issues on our side. The biggest issue we've had is the performance. Our courses have between 10 and 35 participants, which means an instance of R running on our server for each participant. And even with lower numbers of participants, we have had slowdowns and crashes when everyone is running analyses at once. Secondly, some participants reported that the user interface is still quite unintuitive and could be streamlined. One of the sections in particular is very long and is difficult to tell how far you are through it. We could probably break this up to make it more intuitive. We welcome other feedback about the app in general and the user experience in order to improve it. The biggest benefit and the primary goal of using this approach is that we've had zero technical issues on the participant side since we have been using the app. The lowered barrier of entry for those students without prior experience or exposure to programming languages. And we have received generally positive feedback from our students about it, with the majority reporting that it was easy to use for the purposes of our tutorial. We provide access to the tutorial 24/7 on our website, which means participants can access the, access the tutorial at any time and review the material. It is accessible to anyone else who may have interest. It was developed collaboratively via GitHub using free and open source software. And lastly, it's been shared with other Camarades locations. Our colleagues in Edinburgh are also using the app in their tutorials and they are able to run it on their own server after downloading it from GitHub. So the app is not yet in its final form. The next steps are firstly to optimize server usage to improve performance when many users are running it. We've already optimized caching and we are investigating methods of parallelization. This will reduce and hopefully prevent the slowdowns and crashes that we have experienced so far. Secondly, we're going to clean up the user interface to make it easier and more intuitive to walk through. The one very long section that I mentioned earlier could easily be broken up into at least two other sections as a starting point. We don't want to remove any material. We believe it is important to present the full analysis from the published paper, but we could definitely arrange it in a more digestible way. Lastly, we would like to refine the questions and provide more in-depth feedback as to why answers are correct or incorrect. Thank you very much for your attention. I would like to thank everyone on the Camarades Berlin team and would like to thank our funders at the Cherry Day 3R Department, as well as the developers of Meta, Metaphor, Shiny and Learn R packages for making this project possible. And again, we welcome any feedback regarding the app or the experience and I'm looking forward to the discussion and questions coming through on Twitter.
Thank you, David and Alexandra for that wonderful presentation. And you know, I'm delighted to say that we have all the presenters here for live questions. So please send your questions through on Twitter. If the presenters could turn on their videos and microphones, we'd love to see your faces. I, I think I'm just gonna get questions started. For, for Mark, it's from Neil Haddaway. So this is actually a question that I, I had a similar kind of question about crowdsourcing. And so the question is, should we be gamifying the screening experience for crowds that are involved in, in reviews? As opposed to kind of coordinators managing the projects? Do you think that would be a good solution?
This is exactly what I'm up to is, is really it's gamifying in that, you know, you're using a bunch of non-experts to make decisions on what to include, exclude. And I'd say maybe it's passable, like I, I have not succeeded with it. The idea is to get a lot of eyes on a single study. And like the dual screening, you just have two people making decisions, that's totally inadequate. I mean, as far as I could tell, 20 plus kind of washes out the few screeners, the few reviewers that really have no clue what decisions they're making. And it's just, should we do this? I think if we could process, if you have, if you have the capacity to have many people screen a single study, then I think it's probably okay. The challenge is like you're wasting a lot of effort there. And that now a single study gets a lot of attention, but if you have thousands, then you, it's a, it's a distribution problem on making screening decisions.
Yeah, yeah, great point there about resource waste, right? Wolfgang, I see your hand up and then we'll go to Alexandra as well.
Yes, so Mark, very interesting. I really like this idea. So in meta-analyses, we often worry about dependencies these days, right? Big topic. So how do you, how do you avoid that students are sort of getting together and doing the coding together and then you get dependent codes?
Well, okay, so every student gets a random collection of studies. And so maybe two students, 20 students out of 100 class will get the same study. But how do you coordinate that, right? And so maybe, well, I do have an open discussion board for difficult situations and students typically vote to make a decision on whether or not to include, exclude. But yeah, you're right. So there is, there is that challenge, but as far as I know, it doesn't really happen because again, students have like 30, 30 titles, abstracts to screen. It's a totally random collection from the sample population to screen. And so they don't have, like in a dual screening design, you have two people with the same collection. They can coordinate. But when it's a complete random sample, then coordinating for individual studies, I think, would be really tough for them to, to manage. Although, who knows?
Alexandra?
Great presentation, thanks, Mark. I just wanted to share some experience that we've had with crowdsourced meta research projects on work that, that's been published. We have used pre-training. So reviewers that want to be involved in the project need to pass some level of training before to, to check comprehension of things like the PICO or, or that kind of thing. A platform like Learn R could be used to, to do that. The Learn R functions, yeah, it can record how many people have passed, not passed. You're not able to move to the next section until you do pass it, things like that. And you can also download it as an instructor. You can download class results and individual student results as well. I think it's really interesting, your, your dilemma about kind of randomly presenting articles or not for screening. And one of the, the software that we use randomly presents the articles for title and abstract screening. And we have it set at two kind of agreed decisions. So that's whether there's three people involved or whether two people initially kind of agree already. And those just kind of get presented in random order. You could also increase it to say that, you know, five people need to agree in order to make that decision to that paper included or excluded, playing around with, yeah, how many screeners is required for a paper to be included.
Yeah, the, the challenge I face is, you know, because things aren't pairwise anymore. You, instead of it being like a binary include, exclude, now I have like a proportion, right, that could range from, you know, minus one to one. And that's what basically this cloud is, right? It's like 20 students on this individual study right here on average made a decision to include it. And so what I do is like, I kind of convert this into space. If you occupy this space here, then the study gets included. If you occupy this space, the study gets excluded. And if you occupy either of these competing or complementary spaces, the whole studies get reviewed again, which again, totally inefficient.
Sounds like a really complex algorithm. We, we usually work with three screeners and then the agreement has to be above 66%, but with 20, 20-plus screeners, that seems like
Well, okay, here's the even, even weirder thing that I did not talk about is the way this is done is the number of screeners assigned per study is also random. So you could have up to 10 to 50 students screen the same study.
Despite the challenge, I feel like I need to like collaborate and harness some of your student power because it would be fantastic to have this, this body of students that are kind of willing to do this work.
That's why I get excited every semester. I'm like, holy smokes, folks, let's do some science, let's push, push things forward. But then, you know, not everyone is motivated, not everyone is like committed. You know, everyone's exciting at the beginning of the semester, but when the semester's near ending and they have to worry about exams and all that stuff, they really don't want to be spending time screening studies.
No, that, that makes a lot of sense. Oh, Alexandra, here.
Sorry, I just have another question on, on that point. I wonder how much, I mean, I don't know how you've set up your course about how much this contributes to, to class credit. But something that's worked really well for us in crowdsourced projects in the past is having a leaderboard that's like updated live. So who's done the most screening, who's contrib, you know, done, contributed? And people are naturally really competitive, so that works really well for us.
I, I do that when we reach the stage of finding research articles where it ends up being just a giant competition or who could find PDFs of certain things. And, and if something does not get done, like a student does not submit their papers on time, then that effort gets distributed as bonus points for the class, as a bounty to get things done. Yeah, I, I love all this stuff again, but it's, to me, the implementation has always been the real hiccup.
Wolfgang, I saw your hand raised as well.
Yeah, I, I would like to address David's presentation for, for the moment because I think this is also absolutely fantastic. For, for about a year or so, I've had on my to-do list for metaphor, create a swirl tutorial or learner tutorial. So thank you, I can scratch one thing off my list. And really, it's, it's, it's really absolutely fantastic. I was wondering, how easy is it to take what you have set up and sort of plug in a different dataset into, into sort of the learner tutorial you have created? That's my first question. And the other one, I believe at the moment you're not using this in terms of grading or anything like this in terms of quizzes, this is really like a teaching tour. But have you also considered making this part of like a grading type of system where you can also give people quizzes that they're graded on?
We Okay, yeah. Yeah, regarding your first question, it shouldn't be too difficult to switch the dataset. It only took us a matter of days to get this up and running from the previous script that we had. Yeah, so I could see it being quite straightforward to switch it over.
Yeah, and I have a question actually for both Wolfgang and David. Just, you know, in terms of, this is from Neil, in terms of thinking about, you know, the resources that, that you both have provided to the community. Do you think there's a way that we could combine this work to, you know, really vastly scale training and evidence synthesis kind of globally? Or how could we maybe do that? Because these are great resources, right? But it's thinking about that pipeline about how to, yeah, so I'll let either of you answer.
Well, I mean, if I, if I may, I can, I mean, if you really want to sort of think about, so if it's not so difficult to, to sort of swap out the dataset, you could almost like sort of imagine a system where the user can choose a dataset out of the datasets, for example, a metadata. And dynamically, the, the learner tutorial is then created using that particular dataset. I mean, that would take I mean, that would take quite some effort to really like automate this process. And of course, the types of issues and methods that you can sort of illustrate with the different datasets will differ. But I mean, that would be, that would be like fantastic, right? Like choose one of these datasets that you are really interested in learning more about, right? That becomes more motivating if it's a dataset that you are actually really interested in. And then automatically a sort of learner tutorial is created on the fly tuned to that dataset. I mean, that would be amazing.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. I see Alexandra, you have your.
Yeah, no, that would be really cool. I can definitely see, yeah, many potential avenues for collaboration in the future. Creating a modular Shiny app where these learner components are integrated so that, you know, depending on what the effect measure is, depending on what the heterogeneity investigation is, like subgroup or meta-reg, those kinds of things, that, that could be really cool. And to make it, to make it more accessible, I think our app is obviously for teaching preclinical animal systematic review. So a lot of the information is, is, yeah, specific to that. But yeah, we use a published dataset as an example, so people can recreate the analyses from that. On that note, Wolfgang, I wanted to ask if we could add a new effect measure to your metaphor package, the normalized mean difference. Then we wouldn't need to hard code it ourselves and we could use it straight from your package, but we can talk about that more later.
Well, just get in touch. I mean, happy to, to hear what you have in mind, so yeah.
Thanks, everybody. I'm just double checking about any, any questions that are coming in through the, through the chat. So Kira had a, had a question regarding use of pulling datasets into Metaphor automatically? If, if, if we would ever be able to kind of reach out like data that's published from pre-print servers in kind of into this system? I don't know if that's a possibility. Maybe a question for Wolfgang, but Mark is shaking his head, yes, so. You're saying that would be ideal, Mark.
I don't, I, I should not answer this. I don't think I could do that, but Wolfgang might.
Well, I mean, you can, if you have a CSV file or whatever lying somewhere on OSF, I mean, you can, that's one command to read it in. And, but, but if you want a dataset properly in metadata, you really need to document the dataset, right? So that's, that's really the, the, the kind of the more tedious thing that you have to really create a code book for every variable in the dataset. But, but that's the, that's the sort of formality that we really want. We want well-documented, well-described datasets, right? So it's easy to just read in some data, but then you're looking at 50 variables that you have no idea what they mean, right? So there's a little bit of extra effort involved there, yes.
And, and the next step from that is having these file formats for meta-analysis datasets as a standard for any publishing. So yeah, future, future goals, that there is documentation and metadata for all datasets so that we can use the same code scripts for the dreams.
Because when you, when you integrate a dataset in your package, you're the, you're the one who's doing all the consistency and formatting, right? Or you get help, right?
I hope people supply really the dataset, the data preparation script that turns that into this R data file and this help file, right? And if, even if you don't know how to write our help files, there's the prep that function that sets up the template. It even looks at the dataset, figures, figures out what are the variables in the dataset? Are they numeric? Are they character variables? So it sets that all up for you. And then you just need to complete the description of each variable and of course, the title. And you need to add the reference and so on. But I mean, that's just copy paste from another example and then just adjust, right? I mean, it's, it's not super complicated. But yeah, I do, or my collaborators, we, we do want to take a look at, at these submissions, right? So to make sure that they are well-described and clear and, and so. But yeah, we, we'll be happy to work with you on that. If you have a dataset and you just need help getting it into metadata, just get in touch and, and we can, we can get you started.
That's a great offer. And I, I think one of the things that, that I find so helpful about your, your work that have a burning of folks learning it, and it can be used for those trainers of, of people that are learning. I mean, I, I could actually see, you know, someone like Mark maybe having, if he had a group of students who he felt like were a little bit more advanced, starting to use your metadata, like creating a data file from that systematic structure and then using that as a teachable moment to say, okay, maybe you got it wrong here, but this is actually, these are the elements that we're looking for to have kind of transparent and open science. And, and this is why this is important. So all these tools I see kind of fitting together to, to help, you know, develop this larger evidence synthesis.
Yeah, that's like a really important learning outcome is annotating datasets, right, for reuse. It's surprising how many things are floating out there with little or no information. And you're kind of left to figure it out. And that's why this is so important to have these packages because that is, has been filtered, reviewed in a consistent way. I mean, it's absolutely fantastic.
Alex, I thought I saw your hand go up, but maybe I was a minute ago, maybe I was wrong.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that the questions coming in on Twitter were also being. Is, are there more questions from Twitter at the moment or do we have time?
I don't see any here.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to ask Wolfgang and Mark if you, your experiences with teaching R and I guess R packages to, yeah, to a wide range of audiences, is there kind of help material that you feel is better for students at different stages? Or yeah, how can we, I guess, optimize the learner experience for either people that are new to, like we want to teach meta-analysis, but they're new to R? Or they know R, but they're new to meta-analysis? Do you have any experience of if those groups of students maybe approach things in a different way?
Good question. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a tough one. So I mean, I, I teach a lot of meta-analysis courses, right? But and, and there I do not really assume that people have a lot of R experience. So I focus on just sort of the, the minimal part about R necessary to really get started with meta-analyses. Of course, having some background with R is super helpful. And, and that tends to be actually sort of the audience that I have. So people who really do not have a lot of R background and then just really want to learn how to, to run their meta-analyses with R. And yeah, while there you, you just have to, in my experience, what you have to do then is really minimize the R code, right? Like, so one of the, for example, like with, with metaphor, you can create forest plots. But if you want that forest plot to look nice, it's, it's like three pages of code, right? I mean, I openly admit that this is how it is in Metaphor, right? And so, okay, maybe, so I don't focus on that because it's just going to be total overload on all these nitty-gritty details of how to create nice figures with R, right? So I, I sort of show them the basic one and, and just show them in principle, yes, you can customize this to not look so ugly. But yeah, you have to, you have to tune your teaching to like the audience. That's super important. But yeah, beyond that, it's, it's hard for me to say like, yeah, if you have people who are super experienced with R, like how I would approach that? I don't know if anybody else has any ideas.
I've, I've tried to do it where the, there's like multiple learning outcomes in the course where you start learning R, then you learn stats, then you do the two, and then you move to meta-analyses. And I feel like nobody walks away knowing anything with that. Maybe, maybe they could learn, maybe they don't know how to tinker with R, but it's just too much all at once. And if you could separate those learning outcomes, I think students' motivations increase because they don't have so many giant benchmarks or hurdles to learn to achieve, to understand the next level. And I had, I, again, I say that I totally, I'm very unsuccessful in doing that and I try to keep those things isolated. So I wish it was like this universal course you could take where you learn stats, you learn R, you learn meta-analysis, you learn reporting. But that's just a lot. That's like a multi-year course, maybe.
It, it probably would be. And unfortunately, on that note, I am going to have to end the session. We're out of time, but I want to thank all our, our panelists, presenters. Thanks for a great discussion and for sharing your, your really valuable work with, with us and with the larger audience. I want to remind everyone that the session closing, the conference closing today will be at 2:00 PM GMT, so it's in about a half hour. So we look forward to seeing you all then and, and thanks for participating.